Good evening, everyone. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
Again, good evening and welcome to the November 8th regular planning and zoning meeting. If I could have attendance from my left, please. Brian Collegian.
Nancy Austin.
Mike Dolan.
John Grant.
Carl S. Moore.
Tom Nichol.
Tom Panzella.
And I'm Scott Marlowe, Board Chair, and we're joined by David Sulcus, City Planner, and Chris, who is going to be taking the notes for us tonight. First item of business is, I would like a motion, I'd like to reorder the agenda of the public hearings to swap items one and two, and take care of item two first. Is there a motion for that, Mr.?
I'll motion to swap them.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor? Very good. So, first item of business under new business is item one, 681 East Broadway, R5 District, petition of Catherine A. Celini trustee for a site plan and CAM for a new, for a new single family home on map 22, block 474, parcel four, of which Catherine A. Celini trustee is the owner. Do we have someone who's going to protect, present this? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Scott Monday. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of Connecticut. We prepared the application with a lot of help from the staff, Mr. Sulcus, Greg, the city engineer. The house was damaged during Storm Irene and Storm Sandy, and was uninhabitable. The owner wants to do a few things to make the new construction better. The house is into the street line of the state right of way of East Broadway. We're going to move the house back into the lot. We're also going to elevate the house above the base flood elevation. And what was the last thing? Oh, and the footprint's smaller than Nissasing House, so it's a better situation going forward. Any questions?
Mr. Sulcus.
I can't really add anything to what Mr. Monday just said, other than to tell you that it does conform to the zoning, and there appears to be no adverse impact on coastal resources.
Are there questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve project for 681 East Broadway.
Mr. Grant has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Nichols. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Collegian?
I'm with the motion.
With the motion.
Mr. Dolan?
With the motion.
Mr. Grant?
With the motion.
Mr. Moore?
With the motion.
Mr. Nichol?
With the motion.
Mr. Panzella?
With the motion.
And I'm with the motion. So, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item two is 833 East Broadway, R5 Zone, petition of Ray Pear, agent for site plan and CAM for a new single-family home on map 27, block 475, parcel two, of which Robert Pacelli is the owner. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Raymond G. Pear, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut, Vice President of Engineering of West Cotton Maves located at 142 Temple Street in New Haven, Connecticut. Here on behalf of the owner applicant, Mr. Robert Pacelli, who is here with us this evening, and also on behalf of Mr. Paul Stoll, who prepared the survey and the plot plan, who could not be with us this evening, and also have with us Mr. Robert Cardello from RAC Architects Design. Before you, I have both the survey in your packet, and then the plot plan, site plan. Property is located in a R7.5 zone, proposing to demolish the existing structure. Before you is the map north to the top. I've got Long Island Sound here to my right, and then East Broadway to the far, my far left. The property, the current structure is nonconforming in the front setbacks, side setbacks. The proposed structure will be conforming in all aspects of the zoning requirements. The only existing nonconformity, like so many parcels in this area, is the width. The width is 45 feet. Again, the proposed structure will be within all of the building setbacks and in conformity. We have prepared the CAM report. We worked with staff, and also received comments from engineering. We have edited the CAM report. You have that in your package. We basically had to check a couple of boxes. There are no adverse impacts to any of the CAM resources. We meet all of the requirements. The finished floor, the structure is above the flood elevation. We don't anticipate any, any issues or problems with development as presented, so we respectfully request your positive review and approval this evening. I also have the architect with me, should you have any questions on the building itself. Also, I'm open for questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sulcus.
The applicant proposes to build a new house replacing the smaller existing home. The proposed three-story home is zoning compliant as presented in the plans. Technical issues to be addressed for the city engineer can be a condition of approval, and there appears to be no adverse impact on coastal resources.
Are there questions from board members? Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, how do you propose to build this with the, without affecting the natural dune and the seagrass that seems to go right into your patio and along the side of the building? How are you going to protect that, or what are you going to do? Move it and replant it, or what?
Those features occurred from neighboring property and vegetation. The intent is to protect along the border to the extent possible, but the features that are within the proposed footprint will indeed have to be removed and relocated further toward the water. The location of the house, proposed structure, is in alignment, relative alignment with the neighboring properties of similar, similar development, so those, those features will be removed as necessary for the construction.
So, they're going to be removed, and they're going to be replanted? Or you're saying this is something that the neighbors had built or put into place, and it just, seagrass just grew there?
Right. We're saying that the neighbors had, had encroached on property on sides, and those, they had done some plantings, landscaping. We're going to work with the neighbors to remove those, but of course, anything that could be maintained or moved onto their property further down would be done so.
Other questions from board members? All right, thank you. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for this item. Mr. Dolan?
I'll make a motion to approve 833 East Broadway, petition of Ray Pear, agent for site plan and CAM for single, new, for a new single-family home on map 27, block 475, parcel two, of which Robert Pacelli is the owner.
Mr. Dolan, do you want to make the engineer's comments conditional with that?
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
It's more as part of our motion.
I'll, I'm not going to include that at this point.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there questions on the motion? Mr. Grant?
Yeah, question is, is the technical issues for the city engineer, what are they?
Well, this will be a two, a two-layer answer, because he gave us a memo today that said the following. The plan should have been revised as requested on my earlier review. Then he goes on to say, I find the response to be satisfactory, and then see a revised CAM application has not been provided for his review. So now you have to take that in the context of what he had said earlier. I mean, it sounds as if most of what he was looking for had been addressed, but he's got, there, there, his original report, which that was, an update to, was three pages long. So I can try to hit the highlights of that. Let's see. The plan should be revised to indicate proposed concrete curb sidewalks. Driveway aprons is required by the Engineering Division and Public Works Department for new construction. The plan should be revised to indicate underground sewer laterals and sewer utilities. The coastal area management report should be revised as described in items 10 and 11 here and above. Note that these are technical corrections. It appears that the coastal area management report as submitted is consistent with the Coastal Area Management Act. Upon completion of the recommendations of A through C inclusive here and above, there will be no remaining or outstanding engineering issues.
Are there other questions? So, there's a motion on the, on the table to approve as submitted, without making the conditions part of that from the engineer.
In effect, in the end, even without the conditions, when the applicant goes to get his permits, he's going to have to meet those conditions anyway, because they're by ordinance and regulation from other departments.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, we'll take a vote. Mr. Collegian?
With the motion.
Ms. Austin?
With the motion.
Mr. Dolan?
With the motion.
Mr. Grant?
With the motion.
Mr. Moore?
With the motion.
Mr. Nichol?
With the motion.
Mr. Panzella?
With the motion.
And I'm with the motion as well. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business under new business is item three, 1201 Boston Post Road, SCD District, petition of John Nuff, Attorney, for a site plan approval for a minor amendment to a special permit for Dave &amp; Buster's Restaurant at the mall, tenancy number 2094 on map 27, block 475, parcel two, of which the Connecticut Post Limited Partnership is the owner. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Nuff, 147 Broad Street here in Milford, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Dave &amp; Buster's of Connecticut, Inc., which is a proposed tenant of the Connecticut Post Mall. With me this evening is Lisa Warren, who's the Vice President of Development with Dave &amp; Buster's. There are two applications before you, amendment to the mall special permit, and amendment to our site plan approval pursuant to 3.9.2.15, and that provision says that if you're changing a tenant in the interior of the mall, no approval is required, but it's only when the mall or a tenant proposes an exterior structural changes to the existing building, then we have to submit an amendment to our special permit and our site plan. So we're only here tonight in regard to the very modest, but, you know, attractive upgrading to the exterior of the mall. Dave &amp; Buster's proposes to locate its dining and gaming facility, or entertainment facility, in that portion of the mall formerly occupied by Bye Bye Baby, as well as some additional tenant space. The total square footage of Dave &amp; Buster's will be 38,176 square feet. Taking a, just to step back for a moment, as you may know, my firm has represented the mall since the 70s, and I've represented the mall for over 20 years. Over that time, the city, in particular this board and the staff, and the mall have had a wonderful and cooperative relationship. The city has recognized the unique role that the mall plays in terms of economic development and ensuring a strong tax base, and the mall has recognized that the city wants to ensure that the mall not only maintains its vibrancy and relevance, but also that offers an experience and appearance that the city can be proud of. And this application is part of that long tradition, but with a few twists. First, this is the application Dave &amp; Buster's, and it's not the application of the mall itself, but it is the first application regarding the mall to come before you, since Westfield has sold it to Centennial Real Estate. And second, the other sort of twist from the, what's taken place over the past several decades, is that you don't have to be a Wall Street retail analyst to know what's happening to retail in general and regional malls in particular, and certainly no secret that brick-and-mortar stores are facing unprecedented challenges from online retailers, and is therefore incumbent upon mall owners to rethink the mall experience and its offerings to ensure the mall's long-term success. And bringing Dave &amp; Buster's to the mall is the first and absolutely critical step in Centennial's efforts to ensure that the mall continues to be a place that people want to visit and to experience, to shop, to dine, and to be entertained. Because the one thing that an online retailer cannot deliver, whether overnight or otherwise, is an experience, and particularly an experience that you share with your family, your children, your friends, and even your coworkers. And that's precisely what Dave &amp; Buster's provides. Dave &amp; Buster's is unlike other national restaurants, because first, they're not just a restaurant, but also because they draw patrons between 40 and 50 miles away. Dave &amp; Buster's currently has locations throughout the country, but the closest to Milford are in Manchester, Connecticut, and in Westchester County. And in fact, since, you know, this is coming out, so I've told people about Dave &amp; Buster's coming to the mall, there's a number of Milford people have told me that they drive to the one in Manchester in order to experience, you know, that wonderful facility. So, Dave &amp; Buster's was looking for a facility that's located between Westchester and Manchester, and after looking at a number of sites, and there was, and Dave &amp; Buster's was highly sought after by other developments, they selected the mall, fortunately for Centennial. So, and not only is Dave &amp; Buster's coming to the mall important, but it's also important as to its location. As we all know, a lot of activities focus at the one in the mall where you have Target and Dick's and the food court and the movie theater. This is going to be on the opposite side of the mall towards Sears, and also on the backside, where it can really bring some new life and vibrancy, and as people come to visit, presumably from 40 miles away, whether they're coming to see a movie, or whether they come to Dave &amp; Buster's, they will now be traversing the mall, and therefore help all those tenants in the mall in between the two ends. So, I want to have Lisa Warren step up for a moment, just to tell you a little bit more about Dave &amp; Buster's, and then we can take you through the very modest changes to the plans.
For the record, my name is Lisa Warren, 2481 Manana Drive, Dallas, Texas, 75220. I do want to give you a quick overview of Dave &amp; Buster's for those of you that aren't familiar with it, but before I start that, I want to thank you for considering our application this evening. We've been working really hard on our design and layout to take advantage of the opportunity at the mall. We think it's a great fit, and we're excited to bring Dave &amp; Buster's to this community. So thank you very much for considering our application tonight. So one of the first questions that I usually get about Dave &amp; Buster's is, is there a Dave or a Buster? And the answer is yes. Dave &amp; Buster were friends from Little Rock, Arkansas. Buster owned a restaurant, and Dave owned a gaming and a billiards hall. And what they experienced is that people would come to Buster's Restaurant, put their name on the waitlist, and then go over to Dave's and play games. And so the two gentlemen built a canopy between their establishments, and therein sort of sparked the idea of the concept for Dave &amp; Buster's. They scraped together all their pennies, and they came to Dallas, Texas, to open the first actual Dave &amp; Buster's. And so that was in 1982. So we've been building stores and operating Dave &amp; Buster's since 1982. We now have just over 100 locations, so I think this location would put us into the top 110, which would be really exciting. Typically, our stores are between 30,000 and 40,000 square feet, and so as Mr. Nuff said, this one falls right within those parameters. On a revenue basis, our stores will do anywhere from eight to 10 million dollars a year in revenue, and what that means is that we need a large staff and management team to operate our stores. So our locations employ about 120, up to 140 people, depending on volume. So, we tend to have a number of games, both redemption style, which is where you win tickets or points, as well as simulation or video. We'll have anywhere from 170 to 200 games in our location. We offer a full menu, restaurant and bar, so everything ranging from appetizers to burgers to steaks to salads. For those of you who haven't been, it's a, it's a wide variety menu. So demographically, we're split pretty much down the middle, as far as appealing to males and females, as well as to families and singles. That'll change a little bit based on daypart, so Saturday afternoon, of course, more family-oriented, a lot of birthday parties, whereas weekend evenings will be a little bit skewed more towards adults. So we kind of have two main types of business, those that you just walk in, groups or whomever, as well as we have dedicated space in the store for what we call special events, so birthday parties or mitzvahs, wedding receptions, whatever, corporate events, whatever it is that you want to make a reservation for, we have specific space for that. In addition to what you experience in the store, we pride ourselves on being a community partner. So we have a national relationship with Make-A-Wish, for those of you familiar with that organization. And we aren't the wish itself, but what our organization is a great partner is that we are where the granting of the wish occurs. So when a child gets their wish, it's often at a Dave &amp; Buster's that we have a program with Make-A-Wish, that we do those in our locations. In addition, our general managers of each location, though, partner with local community charity events as well, and that's up to the discretion of each of our general managers. From an operating standpoint, you can see the last couple of pages of the brochures that we handed out sort of highlight some of those operating procedures, but during the weekdays, we're open usually from 11:00 a.m. till midnight. In the summer, we like to open a little earlier, because school is out, and we find that kids and family want to start their day earlier, so sometimes we adjust those hours, and then on the weekends, we stay open even later than that. We have a number of house policies that we put in place to manage, because we have a large facility, and there's a lot going on, and we serve alcohol, so we have a lot of alcohol service policies. We have a national policy with Serve Safe. We have a national mystery shop policy. It's a bars program, just to make sure that all of our policies are being adhered to. We also have dedicated captains' positions in our facilities, and their role is specifically to sort of oversee the shift, to make sure that everybody's behaving properly. And then at peak time, sometimes we also employ off-duty police officers and security to make sure that in our large facility, everybody remains safe and has a great time. So I hope you can flip through the brochure that we gave you. The floor plans that are in there are just typical. We, of course, have a very specific plan for this location, but all the elements are the same. The look and feel will be what you see in that brochure, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions? Yes, Mr. Nichol.
Yeah, can you be more specific about your hours of operation?
Yes. Weekdays, we are 11:00 to midnight, and we are 11:00 to 2:00 Thursday through Saturday. So Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 to midnight, Thursday through Saturday, 11:00 to 2:00 a.m.
Mr. Moore? Ask a question?
I'm sorry.
In regards to Mr. Nichol's question in regards to security, can you elaborate more on the security for 2:00 a.m.? How's that going to work? Is that the mall's or yours?
Yeah, it'll be two layers. So, well, really three. So the first, we have a National Director of Security for Dave &amp; Buster's. His name is James Rousseau, and James works with each community, and in this case, since we're at a mall, will work with the landlord team to come up with a security plan, so that we can understand what does the mall provide for outside of our walls, so that we can complement that with our plan for inside our four walls. And so he'll work with local police chief and get sort of an idea of, some jurisdictions allow you to hire off-duty policemen, others it's private companies, so we'll sort of understand what the proper protocol is here, and then we'll come up with a plan as far as when we think we need on-duty staff. It's usually just during our peak hours, which are Friday and Saturday nights, that we have people, one or two officers or security staff on the premises.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Nichol.
Not familiar with Dave &amp; Buster's, but could you equate that to any other restaurant-type sports bar that we have in the area, or is this too ginormous?
Lisa's from Dallas. I would say no, there is no analogous, you know, facility. I don't want to call it a restaurant, because it's obviously more than that, but no, it's, but everything that they propose is permitted in the, in this district. I mean, it's just indoor entertainment together with a restaurant and, you know, a sports bar.
Would you say the gaming floor is how big?
Generally, I don't have, let me, can I grab my floor plan real quick, and I'll be Before I talk about square footage, from a revenue perspective, the gaming takes up is about half of our revenue. So we do about 50% in games, and then about 50% in food and beverage. And it's, and within that gaming, it is all games of skill. We don't have any games of chance. So if you play our games, you can get better at them. It's not games of chance, so that's why we are nothing like casino or gambling. We are all games of skill. From a square footage standpoint, our main floor area is almost 37,000 square feet, and of that, almost 14,000 of it is the arcade.
Other questions? Okay, Attorney Nuff, do you want to continue? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Grant, I know that you have your full-size plans that were dropped off to you, you know, I'd be happy to walk you through those. We have some other, you know, colored versions. I know you have some other hearings. I mean, so we'd be happy to actually address the reason why we're here tonight, which is the outdoor facade changes. I mean, if you wanted to take two or three minutes to do that.
I'd like to, yes, have you review the outdoor changes.
So what you have before you is exactly what was in the, in the full-size plans that you received last week. The first page is simply an existing conditions plan that showed the, as existed when Bye Bye Baby was in, was in that space. The second page is the proposed changes to the site itself. Obviously, we're trying to create, both in terms of this site, in terms of how you walk in across the crosswalk and up sort of the angled walkway, is trying to create a sense of excitement and arrival, and so, you know, a sense that you're in a different place as you enter Dave &amp; Buster's. And then probably what you're most interested in is the last page, which And then probably what you're most interested in is the last page, which is the changes to facade. We've given you pictures of the existing Bye-Bye Baby space and the proposed Dave and Buster space. You can see that there's sort of a colonnade where Bye-Bye Baby is, and there's sort of a raised element to the right. That element's coming off. That colonnade is being removed as well. So actually, the building's being pushed back to a certain extent. And then the, you know, sort of the traditional Dave and Buster's motif is going to be applied to the exterior of the building. And the, you see sort of like those spotlight sort of images, those are not lights. It's just a treatment to the facade itself that gives the impression of spotlight shining up along the outside of the wall.
Are there questions? Mr. Nichols?
Yes. I should have brought this up earlier, but how do you segregate the adults from the children in this ginormous place and keeping them in an area that's appropriate
Well, I mean, we don't have, well, in this layout, per state liquor laws, there are walls with certain limited openings to the bar area. So the bar proper has the right restrictions around it that conform with code here. And I believe it's a state code because we have the same layout in our Manchester store. So the bar area is somewhat, I guess, walled off. They're not full-height walls. They're four-foot walls with two-foot of glass so that it's partitioned from the primary bar area.
So is there checkers that would be checking IDs coming in from all these different entrances going into the bar?
They don't check at the entrances of the bar. They only check when you order a beverage. And we have a one-drink, one-ID policy. And that's part of what our secret shopper program is looking to make sure people adhere to. So one person can't go to the bar and buy three beers. It's one drink, one ID.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Solkas, comments?
The applicant proposes a tenant fit out of approximately 38,176 square feet for Dave and Buster's, which is a combination restaurant and arcade. Some minor modifications to the building's facade and site plan is what triggered the amendment to the special permit, which is why they're here tonight. The proposed facade changes are zoning compliant. No expansion of the existing wall building is proposed. A grease trap will be reviewed as part of the building permit process.
Are there other questions from board members? Mr. Attorney Nuff, any-
I have, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion on this item. Mr. Grant?
I move to approve the petition for the Dave and Buster's at Connecticut Post Mall for the space 2094 as presented to the board.
Mr. Grant has made a motion. Is there a second, Mr. Nichols? Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Collegian?
With the motion.
Ms. Austin?
With the motion.
Mr. Dolan?
With the motion.
Mr. Grant?
With the motion.
Mr. Moore?
With the motion.
Mr. Nichols?
With the motion.
Mr. Van Zella?
With the motion.
And I am with the motion as well. So motion carries. All right, next item of business, we've reordered the agenda, so we'll be looking at item two under public hearings. 100 Raton Drive, petition of Tribus Beer, Sean O'Neill for a special exception for brewery with pub and patio on map 73, block 928, parcel 4Q, of which Best Buddies LLC is the owner. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trimbickie and Boynton. And my office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I was retained yesterday by the principals of Tribus Beer Company. My clients are seated behind me in the front row here, Matt Weitner, Sebastian D'Agostino and Sean O'Neill, the principals of this new business. And I just want to state from the outset, I think this is a very exciting application, and I'm very pleased to be presenting it to you. It's a new venture that these gentlemen are going to be embarking on. They're currently brewmasters at another brewery here in the area, and they've entered into a lease arrangement to lease the property at 100 Raton Drive. And the application before you is a application for a special exception to allow the facility to not only manufacture the beer on-site, but also to have a tasting room and to be able to sell the product that is produced on-site. Now, I discussed with staff and with Scott before the start of tonight's meeting that what I wanted to do is just give you a brief overview and then continue this to next meeting on the third Tuesday, the 21st, because we do have a traffic engineer who has prepared a traffic report. We have heard that there's some concerns with neighbors in the area as to traffic. We have a traffic report that's been prepared, and our traffic engineer couldn't be here tonight, so we do want to have his input. And if there's questions either from the board or concerns raised by neighbors, we can address those. And also, the architect who has designed the interior floor plan and the rearrangement of the floor plan of the building cannot be here tonight, so I want him here also on the 21st to go into the details of that. But, you know, just as an overview, there will be no new construction to this building. The property is located in the industrial zone. We're all familiar with that area out on Plains Road, beyond Cornfield Road and Harvest Lane, heading towards the river. And there's numerous industrial uses that are in that park. This particular building was previously a manufacturing facility for a fiber optic company that is now relocated, and the owner of the building now has entered into a lease with these gentlemen to commence their project. So as I said, I'm really excited to be bringing this to you. I'd like to have the full cast of characters here with me so we can go into the details. So I've asked to have the public hearing opened, and if it can be continued to the 21st, we'll have a more detailed presentation to you. I also wanted to just make an announcement that if there are neighbors from the area that have concerns that have come tonight, my clients are willing to make themselves available to meet in the foyer. I asked them nicely to close the door if they do go out in the foyer because of the carry of voices into the auditorium for additional business tonight. But they are more than happy to stay and discuss the matter with any of the neighbors if they wish to do so. So with that, I'll conclude my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Solkas, comments?
Not at this time because he's asked to continue the public hearing till the 21st. So if the board is amenable to that, then that's fine.
Just consensus from the board, I would be in agreement that we hold it open to then. But I'm wondering if it would be worth it to hear the public's comments, some of it now, so that if there is something there that you want to address at the next meeting or that you can have answers to, if that would be, if that would be all right with the board. But that would be my thoughts, is to open it to public hearing, and we'll leave the public hearing open.
My only response to that, Scott, is that, and obviously, it's the board's pleasure, but I would like to have the public to get a full presentation, to know what we're doing, because if they come up and are making comments in conjecture as to what we're doing, I don't want to then have to come back up to the microphone and then, I'd rather, I would prefer if we left it so that we make a full presentation to you and then the neighbors can raise concerns or comment, so. It's up to you, obviously.
No, that's fine with me, and I understand that it would be better if they had, if you had someone here that could answer all their questions at once.
Right, and there could be concerns about the traffic, and we don't have our traffic engineer to answer those.
All right, so from just a standpoint of procedure, we'll just leave this open then. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have offered to meet outside, or your clients have, with the, anyone who's interested?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, we will move on to item one under public hearings, which is 65 Plains Road, CDD-1 District, petition of AAP Builders LLC for a special permit and site plan review for 12 units of housing constructed under CGS 8-30G on map 89, block 812, parcel 40A/ A, of which 65 Plains Road LLC is the owner.
Again, for the record, Thomas Lynch. And I'm here on this application representing Andre Petrovich, who's seated behind me with his lovely daughter. Andre is the principal of AAP Builders LLC from Fairfield. And we presented this application to you tonight under the guidelines set forth in section 830G of our statutes for approval of a 12-unit residential complex on the property located at 65 Plains Road. Mr. Petrovich owns the property. He purchased it earlier this year, and, you know, he's proposed this development to you. And we're going to go through the elements of its location in the CDD-1 zone. And I believe with recent events that this board has undertaken, I think it's an appropriate residential affordable project in this zone, even though you saw fit over the last couple of months to remove the affordable component from residential development in the zone. So just to also introduce you to Joe Codispoti Sr., who's here with me tonight. Joe is the principal of Codispoti Associates from Orange, who, the engineering firm who laid out the engineering site plan of the property and also the survey. Also with me is Greg Gru of Gru Architecture. Greg has appeared before the board on numerous times. He's going to go through the elements of the floor plan and the elevations of the building. And then lastly, Steven Ullman from Benash Associates. Steve, again, has been before the board on numerous instances. He has prepared a traffic report. I believe you have it. There was a third-party review of that report from David Spears, which we did receive. And then this afternoon, Steve made some amendments to address a couple of concerns that David had raised in his traffic report, and he'll get into the details of that shortly. But just by way of background, again, I mentioned to you at the outset that the property is located in the CDD-1 zone. That is the major commercial corridor through the central part of Milford, from the Bridgeport Avenue's commercial corridor traversing past the center of Milford and all the way out to the Orange Town Line. Prior to August of this year, residential development was allowed in this zone as long as 30% of the units were set aside for those individuals meeting the affordable rent standards. The board saw fit when Metrostar came in with its application for development of the property across the street to grant the application to amend the zoning regulations for this zone to remove the affordable component. So I was at those meetings, I had other applications that I was handling, and I heard the comment, I believe, from Scott to David asking if there had ever been an affordable project approved in the CDD-1 zone. And the answer was no. And I had to smile because I was seating, seated here in the audience, and I said, "Well, there's one in the pipeline, and you're going to get it pretty soon." And that's this application. The only reason that this application isn't presented to you as a conforming application under the prior CDD-1 regulations is the fact that the regulations require that the size of the property be a minimum of one acre. This property is .56 acres. So that's why it's being presented to you under the 830G standard. But right from the outset, I wanted to stress to you that this is an application that meets the spirit of your CDD-1 zone prior to the change removing the affordable component to it. So it's rather ironic that I'm bringing it to you a couple of months later, but I do want to stress that right from the outset. The existing conditions on the property, there was a house that was built in the late 1800s. It's in total state of disrepair. The whole property is, been basically abandoned. There was a foreclosure of the property. My client bought it from an individual who had bought it as a foreclosure sale. So clearly, the single-family residence that was built in the 1800s is going to be removed. It has no historical significance, but obviously, it does fall under the gamut of our demolition ordinance, which requires that it be submitted to the city historian, and he has the option, if he sees fit, to delay the demolition up to six months. I honestly don't know the status of the demolition permit, but I'm just noting that for the record that this property, because of its age, would fall under the auspices of that ordinance. To the rear of the property, there was a barn where actually during the 1940s until the 1960s, there was a commercial laundry operated there. It wasn't a dry cleaning facility, it was a laundry. And that's going to be, that building obviously will be removed as well. There's been a lot of development in this area, notwithstanding the Metrostar application, which you did approve, which is going to have a hotel and a mixed-use development, as well as the new Milford Police Station. But coupling with that, I understand that the Aldi supermarket is going to be reopening shortly. Cumberland Farms put in their large new facility over the last year and a half. And the property is located on either side by two other commercial uses. There's the office building at 57 Plains Road, and the extended care facility, Carriage Green of Milford, is located to the north, as well as the Hampton Inn. So it's an area that, you know, both Steve and David will be talking about shortly in terms of traffic. It is an area with the infrastructure in place with the exits off of Interstate 95, plus the close proximity to the Post Road. It will lend itself with the other projects to traffic coming in and being dispersed in an orderly fashion. The development of the site itself will have four buildings. You know, both Joe and Greg will go through the features of that with you. But there will be four buildings with three units in each building. So it's similar, actually, in layout with the property that Buddy Field developed on West Main Street. So there'll be three buildings, and then one building in the back portion of the building. The property is going to have 24 parking spaces. There'll be 12 spaces in the garage- There'll be twelve spaces in the garage for each of the twelve units. There's nine spaces with snow shelf that are provided on the westerly side of the property. And then the building in the back will have three spaces in front of each of those units for tenant parking. We originally had one-car tenant parking in front of each of the buildings, but when Fire Marshal Begley reviewed the plans, he asked that they be amended, and we did amend them by removing the parking of the cars in front of the nine units on the easterly side of the property. So that's all part of your package. It's also part of the handout that I just gave to you. So just briefly going through the handout that I did give to you, I have attached, in order, the Affordable and Fair Housing Marketing Plan that we are required to submit with each of these applications. As with my other projects that I've brought before you, I'm going to just basically refer you to page five and six of the plan, because that's where it lays out the rents for these units. There's going to be four units that'll be designated as affordable units. The statute requires thirty percent of the project have set-aside units, so that four of the units will be set aside as affordable. They're all one-bedroom units, so based on the calculations, those tenants whose incomes meet the eighty percent of the state median income guide would be paying rents in the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents a month. And the individuals whose income meets the sixty percent state median number would be paying rents of nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty-three cents. I would assume that with the proximity of the site to the Milford Train Station and Route One, that market rent for the other units would probably be in the range of eighteen hundred to two thousand dollars per month. I have also attached in my handout to you copies of the approvals from each of the city departments that have reviewed the project. We appeared before the Sewer Commission back in February. I have a copy of the approval letter from the Sewer Commission that was issued back in February approving the sewer, the hookup of this project and the twelve units to the city wastewater management facilities. We also have a review letter from Mary Rose Plumbo of the Wetlands Agency. There's no wetlands on site, but she also made some recommendations about the silt fencing to be used during construction because of its proximity in the rear to a swamp located in the back portion near Bailey Road. The plans were also reviewed by our city engineer, Greg Podlasky. He issued his memo on September twenty-first approving the project. He made some minor recommendations, which I believe were reflected in changes to the plans. But again, any motion to approve this project, my client certainly would be amenable to adhering to all conditions set forth in the city engineer's memo. The plans were submitted to the Traffic Division of the Milford Police Department. They were reviewed by Officer Davidson and Officer Hempery. I have attached the August twenty-ninth memorandum from the Police Commission stating that based upon the recommendation for approval that was issued by the Traffic Division of the Police Department, that the Police Commission issued an approval of the project. And then lastly, I attached Fire Marshal Begley's memorandum. The plans, as I mentioned to you before, were first submitted in August. Upon his review, the standard driveway that the Fire Marshal likes to see coming in off of Plains Road did not have twenty-five feet of width, it had twenty-four feet of width. So the plans were amended to eliminate the parking area in front of the twelve, I mean, the nine units on the easterly side of the property. But again, there are twenty-four parking spaces on site. That's two per unit, which meets, even though we're not required to meet the zoning standards as a eight thirty G application, the parking count does meet the standards of our zoning regulations. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Codispoti, and he's going to go through the elements of the site plan.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Codispoti. I'm the founder of Codispoti Associates. Our offices are in Orange, Connecticut. We are engineers, land surveyors, and planners. I'll go briefly with you through the plans that you have before you. The first one is called SP one, which is the site plan as it now exists. And we've already heard some of it. There are actually two buildings that are on the property. This is the property here. This house in the front, and in the back is a barn or previously was a laundry. And it is in disrepair. And very, very sad, because this corridor, of course, is the main corridor from I ninety-five to Route One. However, being in disrepair, this particular property, the changes that will be made on SP two, which just simply shows what we're going to do, is these buildings will be removed. And as we, as was pointed out, whatever's necessary for the removal permits will take place. If you go to SP three, and the plans that were supplied, this is what we propose. If you notice, there are three, four buildings, each of them a three-plex. And we'll let Mr. Gru go through with you what they are. But the beautiful part about this, presently now, as far as from an engineering point of view, the drainage system that's on the property just, is not renovated, it's not retained on the property, it simply goes across onto Plains Road untreated. So what we're going to be able to do on this plan is not just provide for the residents that are here, but we'll improve it so that the drainage will be improved, there'll be renovation. And there's a very interesting thing about here. This, on the west side, the property line is not the fence that appears here. There's an eight-foot fence along that property line that's about ten feet from the line. And those who are in this assisted living facility don't maintain this strip, it just simply sits there. So what we've proposed to do, we've been in contact with them, and we'd like to have some simple grading rights here, which would require that we don't have to build any retaining wall. We will grade onto their property slightly, just six inches to a foot, but maintain that because they don't get equipment around there, they don't mow it, they don't care for it. I don't know if you're familiar with the fence, but it's about a ten-foot, eight-foot-high fence, and it doesn't go along the property line, so that little area, we're going to ask that we can maintain it, because it really looks like it's part of our property at any rate. So the three buildings here that you see, and there is, let's go to SP, let's go to four, SP four. This is a grading and utility plan. Right now, the property gently slopes from north to south. As we said, the stormwater is not treated, it simply flows across and goes on to Plains Road. So what we'll do, the grades are only slightly raised, and they're raised because, as you can see on the grading and utility plan, we're going to put in here, there's going to be, of course, this connection to the sanitary sewer. That makes it very simple, so all of these will be served by a sanitary sewer. And then there's the rechargers, or galleries, right in this area, so that all the stormwater that is generated from impervious surfaces, the roofs, driveways, et cetera, will be channeled here. And then what we'll do is, they will be renovated and go into the ground, so they're recharged, they recharge the groundwater. Then if there is an overflow, we're going to build this twelve-inch pipe. Along with that, we're going to put in storm drain along Plains Road to connect to the existing storm line that here is here at the end of Plains Road. So we'll be taking care for the drainage on this property, so no one is affected. Next is the soil and erosion control plan. The purpose of this is to see that, excuse me, that there's no migration of sediments during construction onto the adjoining properties. Now, there's not a problem here because of this fence, but nevertheless, all the way around the property, we're going to have a silt fence to trap any sediments. Also, during construction, you'll see that we have an area here in which we will have a sediment basin that will trap sediments on the site as they're, as the construction goes along. And of course, it'll be removed afterward, and the sediments removed with it. Here's an area of stockpile, where we're going to stockpile all of this topsoil, and then construction will proceed after the demolition of the two particular homes that are on there now. And we're also going to provide here at the driveway entrance, for any equipment, there'll be a stone driveway that will handle trucking going off and on of Plains Road, so that there's no mud tracking onto Plains Road during construction. Now, the next plan is really just our, which is our planting plan, and it's quite a beautiful job of planting. There are a number of, over a hundred and thirty different plants. But if you look here on the side, you'll notice the amount of trees that will be put into place. All of them are either three-inch caliper, or they're six-foot in height. So there's the list of plants, over a hundred and forty of them, including some twenty-four, twenty-five trees that will be placed on the site. And the planting plan shows that it'll become an attractive place, instead of, of course, what it is now. It'll be something that will be attractive in this corridor. Now, the next plan is a lighting plan that shows how that no spillage will go onto any of the property owners. Now, as you look along the side here, you'll see the foot candles are reflected because they're directional. And even though there's a very slight spillage right at the property line, remember, this fence here is really the place where their property is actively used, and so the lighting plan will not be offensive to the neighbors and be inconformity to what the regulations require. But in conclusion, of course, I'd answer any questions you have. You know, I've been doing this for over forty years, and not particularly just affordable housing. But I started very young, I was three years old, just so you know. But at any rate, what's encouraging about this is this is really the intent of what affordable housing was about. It wasn't a matter of a huge area or a huge number of parcels, but it's very nice when we can have a small, affordable housing project, so that they, these kind of projects could be put in various neighborhoods throughout the city without causing disruption of the neighborhood. And certainly, it won't be a disruption here. In fact, it'll be a compliment. It stands on its own merit. To approve something this size is really beneficial, and really what the framers of the law had in mind, so that it wouldn't be just in one location where we had affordable living, but throughout the city. And so we really encourage you, because what a difference it will make to that property if you take a look at it now. It stands on its own merit, and we trust that you'll approve it. If you have questions now, or if you wish to ask them all at one time, I'll leave that up to you.
Thank you. We'll wait.
Okay. I'll ask Mr. Gru then to discuss with you the plans. The other were just detail sheets.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Milton Gregory Gru. I'm a licensed architect. My office is at two forty-one Main Street South in Woodbury, Connecticut. I've had my own practice in the Litchfield County area since nineteen eighty-nine, and I'm pleased to be able to present this project to you this evening. As was already brought out by Mr. Cody, Mr. Codispoti and Tom Lynch, the project consists of four buildings that have three townhouses each in each building, and the townhouses each are three stories tall, there's no basements in these units. On sheet A one oh one, we see the ground floor, and then the first, the second floor, or the main living level of the units. The ground footprint for each townhouse is eighteen feet wide and thirty-one feet deep front to back. The flanking units on the outside of the, each building, have about nine hundred and ninety square feet of living area. And then in each building, the center unit is slightly larger, and I'll point out to you why that is, but there's a little projection on the upper stories that makes that unit a little over a thousand square feet, about a thousand twenty square feet in living area. But all of the features and the actual design and layout of these units are pretty identical to each other. On the ground floor, plan, each, each townhouse has a one-car garage on that level, along with a small entry foyer and interior stairs that go up to the main living levels. In the rear of the garage is accessed a room that is used as a laundry space for the family, as well as housing the mechanical equipment, heating and air conditioning, water heating equipment, and, and provide some storage space. When, on the first floor plan, we see the set of stairs that go up to the, to the main level, and there we have essentially a wide-open area with the kitchen, an L-shaped kitchen in the back of the unit, and then an open dining and living space on that level. And there's a half-bath there as well. And then we go to the next sheet. On the third floor, the second living level, we have one large bedroom that faces the front of the unit. And when you go, come up the stairs to this level, there's a wide-open area that's used as a loft or study space, so someone can have a den or study there. Young professional couple, or young professionals, or empty nesters would find this very amenable to have some additional space like this. And then there's a full bath on that level as well. The, it's an extra-deep closet that's provided to the master bedroom over the stairs as they're, as they're coming up. There's volume space there as the stairs go down to the second floor, where we can provide the closet. There's also a roof plan here that shows basically a bird's-eye view of the top, top of the units, but the forty-five-degree angles demonstrate to you that essentially, it's a hip roof over the building, and then we have a couple of gables that are layered on the front. So on sheet A two oh one, we have the elevations, and so you can see here that we do have the three stories, the ground level, where we actually have one entry door that's visible on the front, and then the flanking units have their entry doors on the sides, so that there's actually a window in addition on their so that there's actually a, a window in addition at, on their foiers. Uh, then we have the, the second floor, uh, with each having a pairs of, of double-hung windows. And then the third floor, these are the master bedrooms with equally large windows in, in those bedrooms. Uh, and the way that we're able to, in those center, the units have them to be slightly larger is because we have a break by projecting that center unit a few inches beyond the other two at that second and third floor so that we're able to have a, a corner to, uh, demarcate that unit and as well then be able to have a gable roof over that portion layered in front of, uh, this gable, which is then set into the, the hip roof for the rest of the, of the structure. We have a typical side elevation here that, that shows those, those entries for the flanking units, uh, on the side of the, the side of the structures. Uh, and, um, the siding material will be, uh, vinyl clapboard siding. And then on the last sheet, sheet A 202, we have the, the rear elevation, which, uh, on the top, you see those pairs of windows, th- those are in, in those loft areas. And, uh, the windows along the second floor, those are at the kitchen sink in those units. And then we have the other, the other side elevation here as well. And so that, that's the design of those four buildings and the townhouses and be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solkas, any comments?
I'll read you, um, my report, then, um, I have some questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Solkas, there's, yes. One more person.
After this, yeah.
My name is Steve Alman. I am a professional engineer with Alfred and Benesh and Company. I'm licensed in the state of Connecticut. Uh, I did, performed the traffic study for this development and what I just handed out was supplemental data in response to the peer review we received today. I'll cover both at one time. Uh, first of all, this is a, you know, it's a twelve-unit residential development. Uh, it's located on Plains Road, right where Plains Road and West Clark Street meet. Uh, as you know, Plains Road, as it approaches West Clark, is one-way westbound, West Clark is one-way eastbound, and then Plains Road continues on past the site, over Route 95 and, uh, continues on. In the vicinity of this site, Plains Road is one lane in each direction, it's approximately forty feet wide. The posted speed limit is thirty miles an hour. Uh, and the eighty-fifth percentile speeds measured, uh, speeds are thirty-seven mi- thirty-four miles an hour westbound and thirty-seven miles an hour, I'm sorry, thirty-four miles an hour eastbound and thirty-seven miles an hour westbound. Uh, we performed, uh, traffic counts in March of this year at the intersection of West, of Plains Road at West Clark at the, the driveway of the site and at Plains Road at the Aldi driveway, which is opposite the Carriage Greens Drive. Uh, we measured the site distance available from the proposed site driveway along Plains Road. It was found to exceed, uh, three hundred and eighty-five feet, which is what is required for the eight-fifth percentile speeds. Uh, and to the east-west, it was measured at four hundred and twelve feet, which exceeds the required site distance for thirty-seven miles an hour. Crash data was obtained from the city of Milford for the latest three-year period between March twenty-seventh of twenty fourteen and March twenty-seventh of twenty-six, twenty-seventeen, uh, along Plains Road and West Clark Street between Route One and a location three hundred feet to the west of the Aldi Drive. There were a total of six crashes in this area, uh, reviewing the crash pattern, which is shown in the traffic study, traffic flow diagram. There's no geometric or issues out there that show any changes are necessary. The development, as I said, is twelve, uh, twelve units of res- of apartment units. Uh, I used land use two-two-one, which is, uh, low-rise apartments, uh, for the trip generation. This site is anticipated to generate seventy-nine trips total during the day. That would be approximately forty entering, forty leaving. During the AM peak period, there will be ten new trips, two entering and three exiting. And during the PM peak, there are eleven trips, seven entering, four exiting. Um, original study had the distribution set to be, uh, eighty percent to the west towards Route, uh, ninety-five, twenty percent to the east. Uh, today we received a peer review done by DLS Consulting. He will be, Mr. Spear will be making a, uh, presentation after, later. Uh, he, one of his recommendations was that we look at the generated traffic to be fifty-fifty split because that's kind of the traffic flows along Plains Road and I kind of alluded to that in a sudden. Mr. Spear also noted that after we had done our study, but before it was presented to you, the mixed-use development by MetroStar had been submitted and approved. And he suggested and noted that we should have included that in this study and included their volumes in our twenty-eighteen no-build analyses and the twenty-eighteen build analyses. And that is what the letter I just handed you tonight accomplishes. Uh, the capacity analyses for the roadways were done, uh, using the twenty-ten highway capacity analysis methodology. Uh, original analysis was done using the soft, the software by, called Synchro version nine. The analyses I handed out tonight uses the newest version, version ten. Uh, for unsignaled intersections, there's not really any changes. Uh, the analyses were done for the existing volumes, the twenty-eighteen no-build volumes and those are the volumes that would be anticipated on the roadway network before this development is completed and the twenty-eighteen build volumes, which is what happens when this development is opened. Uh, in the supplemental package, which is really germane to this, uh, reflects Mr. Spear's comments, is a traffic flow diagram, which is the traffic generated by others. That is the MetroStar development from the March report by Maloner McBroom. Uh, the generated trips are revised to show fifty-fifty split of the trips generated by this development. The twenty-eighteen no-build conditions, which is essentially the existing volumes expanded by one, one percent per year, I believe, for, for one year for general background growth plus the traffic anticipated from the MetroStar mixed-use development. And the twenty-eighteen build conditions, which takes the twenty-eight, no, eighteen no-build volumes and then adds our traffic to it. The existing conditions, uh, analyses show that all of the, the intersections studied operate at levels of D or better, the driveways during the AM peak and the Carriage Green, the mixed-use drive, uh, or the Aldi's drive is level service, uh, F during the PM peak. For the twenty-eighteen no-build conditions, and that would be the new conditions, uh, the driveway of the mixed-use development and Carriage Greens, the, uh, eastbound and westbound lefts along Plains Road operate at level service A or better during both the morning and afternoon peak period. The mixed-use drive operates at level of service E in the morning and F in the afternoon. And the Carriage Greens will operate at level service D in the morning and C in the afternoon. During, for the build conditions, when we are opened and people are living in the facility, uh, the driveway to Plains Road from our site will operate at level of service C or better throughout the day. Observe, at level, level of service C in the morning and level of service C in the afternoon. Uh, the intersection of the proposed drives and Carriage Greens will operate still at level service E during the morning for the mixed-use development, D for the Carriage Greens in the morning, F in the afternoon for the mixed-use and C in the afternoon for Carriage Greens. With our development, that level of service E and F only increases by a matter of seconds, one or two seconds, average vehicle. Uh, it is our opinion that the, uh, development of sixty-five Plains Road with the residential development will not impede or impair traffic operations along, uh, the roadway network and can open safely. Um, I'll kind of, I'll wait for Mr. Spear to do, give you his full report before I respond more to his report.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Spear, are you going to, is that, or? Be- before we do that, though, I've been asked if we would take a two-minute break. So if we, we're gonna take a two-minute recess. All right, we will come back to order. Um, Mr. Solkas, were you going to comment?
Okay, the applicant proposes a twelve-unit eight-dash-thirty-G residential complex at sixty-five Plains Road. The applicant proposes a retaining curb that will require permission from the adjoining property owner to construct if the applicant conducts construction or regrading on their property. The city engineer has multiple technical comments that the applicant can address as a condition of a board approval. Located between, uh, an existing office building and an assisted living facility, the proposed use is consistent with other developments either existing or proposed for the area. That's the, uh, report, uh, that was submitted to you. Uh, we learned this evening, according to Mr. Codis Bode, that they are not putting in the retaining curb, uh, but they, uh, apparently are going to do some regrading on the property. Um, have those plans, my question to the applicant is, are those plans, uh, have they been developed? Uh, because I have not seen those plans, uh, and they're gonna need review by the city engineer. And also, do you have approval from the adjoining property owner because this board cannot approve any project that utilizes someone else's property, uh, without their permission?
Well, I can, you're, uh, excuse me, I can address that. The plans that we're asking to be approved, uh, clearly show that we'll put a retaining wall up. Um, the plans show that retaining wall to be, be in place. The thing is that it's in everybody's interest, including the neighbor, uh, to be able to let us grade on to his property and care for it. But if he doesn't, it has nothing to do with our application. The plans are clearly shown, uh, if you look at SP two and three, they show the retaining wall that we propose. We will not build it if we get permission. Now, the problem is, uh, of course, it's an assisted living next door, which has a large corporation. We've met on the site with their representative, they like the idea, but it may take some time for them to give us permission. But we're not asking, uh, for permission, uh, we're not asking that you approve it on the basis of no retaining wall.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to follow up with that, because Joe may not be privy to emails that Jeff Gordon and I have had with the representatives of Carriage. They are going to give us permission, I can represent that. Um, they want to have a document drawn up, though, uh, that'll, uh, provide for us to have a bond that we will post, um, uh, liability insurance, workman's compensation insurance. But there, there are, uh, emails back and forth and, uh, they are, they are in agreement to that. So, again, the, the approval obviously can be conditioned upon us providing, uh, proof that the, uh, Carriage Path, Carriage Manor people have approved that. Does that make sense?
I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, what's the timeline?
Well, certainly we can't do any construction without having that. And so I, I think clearly the remedy to that is that obviously any approval of this project from the board would have to be conditioned upon us providing, uh, your office, uh, proof that the neighbor has agreed to allow us to, uh, to do that work.
Yeah, can you get, uh, something, uh, while this public hearing is still open, uh, indicating, you know, something from the neighbor indicating all the things that you just represented tonight? Because you're...
If you, if you keep the public hearing open, but I'm just saying, uh, I'm making it clear for the record, we've had the discussions with the neighbor and they've agreed to allow us to do this. We're not gonna be doing any improvements on their property without, without a document being signed. Okay?
I, I don't want to complicate things. It's not necessary that we do that. Uh, if they, you know, we all know that they may say no, and that'll be all right. All it would mean is that we'd have to, where we, we're asking permission on SP three, uh, to build this retaining wall. And if the time comes that, uh, we have these approvals in hand, then we'll drop that. But it is dependent, this project is not dependent on getting permission to use this strip of land because it has no value to us.
Well, uh, Mr. Codis Bode, uh, in, um, with all due respect to you, uh, based on conversations that took place with Jeff Gordon and with our office, um, it's clear that that can't be constructed without impacting the neighbor's property, which is what brought all this on. You can shake your head all you want, but, uh, we know that, you know, that wall cannot be constructed without impacting the neighbor's property, which is what brought us to this, uh, point this evening.
Yeah, but David, I think that the issue is, this board can't approve a project that involves work being done on somebody else's property. And that's a different scenario than what we have here. We're doing work completely on our property, but to access the area that would be necessary to put that, uh, work into place...
Utilizes the neighbor's property. Exactly. Thank you.
You, I think, I think it's semantics. Uh, uh, we're not doing any work and, and your zoning regulations are clear that we can't present an application that includes doing work on somebody else's property. All the work with this project is gonna be done on this property, but there may be access that needs to get to that area that we have to come to from them. And that's a legal issue. That's something that...
Right. And, and again, that's why we need some assurance, some, something from the neighbor. Uh, so if this board approves this, uh, you know, uh, it's done knowing that the neighbor is on board with what's going on.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, logistically, I think that, you know, that's something that can be provided to you, uh, as a condition of approval prior to any work being done. That's, that's just my position. But, uh, the, I don't think we're disagreeing with the fact that as an applicant, we can't come before the board and ask the board to approve a set of plans that shows us doing work on somebody else's property. Agreed? Okay. Thanks.
Attorney Lynch, is there anyone else that's going to present anything? Mr. Spear?
We've completed our presentation. I think David is gonna make a presentation to you and, uh, then Steve can, uh, comment afterwards. But other than that, we've completed our presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is David Spear. Um, I'm the principal engineer with DLS Traffic out of Windsor, Connecticut. I'm a, uh, registered professional engineer. We were retained by the town as a third-party reviewer to provide a peer review of this application. Uh, the primary focus of the review was on the, uh, traffic study prepared by Benesh. Um, we also looked at the site plan for, uh, internal circulation and, uh, standard design vehicle access. Um, the traffic study was, was, uh, generally, uh, done to, to, uh, acceptable standards. Uh, we had a few miscellaneous comments, which, uh, Steve Alman, uh, addressed in his presentation. Uh, we had a comment on the directional split. The, uh, the, the, uh, original report had, uh, used an eighty-twenty split and, and indicated they were, uh, basing that on the existing traffic... that on the existing traffic passing, the site, the travel patterns, and the actual traffic split was, was really closer to 50/50. Although with the volumes at this proposed development, you could really send 100% of the traffic either way, and it's not really gonna be a big traffic capacity issue. So I, I think that's, that's been addressed. The other issue with regard to the volume development was, as was mentioned, the other generator traffic that was added to the background. In traffic studies, there's a hierarchy of traffic volumes, and it's, you know, normally it's in chronological order, so any development approved ahead of your development is generally added into the background traffic. But sometimes you get, in a high-development area, things are going on simultaneously, so it's hard to get all the other development in ahead of the traffic studies. But in this case, they were able to, to add those developments in and reanalyze it and show that there's still no capacity issue. So we generally agree with the, the Banesh report, but we, I did have two, two additional comments with regard to the application. The Banesh report's, report discusses intersection site distance, which is, is the site distance you need when you're exiting a side street or a driveway. And there are some definitions on the offset of where the car sits, and, and the height of eye, which is, is the height of your eye when you're sitting in the vehicle, and the height of, height of object is, is actually the height of eye in the oncoming vehicle, which is three and a half feet in both, both ends. And based on the speed, 85th percentile speeds, there's a, a recommended site distance. And those were, were, are available from the proposed site drive location, as was documented. There's, there's also something called the stopping site distance, which I included in my comments, which is a function of the road. It's not really, it doesn't really have much to do directly with the application. The stopping site distance should be available at all points along a road, so that you have the ability to stop if there's an, an object in the road, a ball rolls out, or a boulder, whatever, there's, there, there could be something in the road, an obstruction, and that, that distance is, is based on a three and a half foot height of eye, which is the driver's eye, and a, and a two-foot height of object currently, used to be six inches, but somehow it got to two feet. So now, when you come over, when you look to the right from the driveway, there's a vertical curve in the road, and that's the limiting factor in the, in the 385-foot site distance looking to the right. So as you come over the vertical curve, you need to be able to see 250 feet approximately based on the speed of 34 miles per hour, the 85th percentile speed. So the thing that is a, is a potential safety concern is, if a vehicle is stopped at this driveway to turn left into the driveway, there's a, there's a significant amount of traffic on Plains Road, and there's, there's six, six, 600 or more vehicles per hour during the peak hours. So this is particularly a condition at the end, the, end of the day during the PM peak hour, when you're coming back to the site and you want to turn left into the site. It would be nice if you had the ability to drive past that left-turning vehicle without stopping, because you come over the vertical curve, and if there's a vehicle stopped there, and depending how they do their turn, they can back traffic up towards the vertical curve. So your stopping site distance gets shorter as the traffic backs up. So it's not really the site traffic that would be an issue, it's the Plains Road traffic combined with the location of the driveway. So when that vehicle stops to turn left, and it's only gonna be one vehicle at a time, the queue behind it from the through traffic can back towards the vertical curve and, and be a potential issue. But it's possible that, depending how that curve flows, that you still can maintain your stopping site distance all the way through even, you know, as the vehicle's back, back up to the vertical curve. But there's 40 feet of pavement there, so there's, there's ample room to restripe it to allow a, a space for the, the vehicles turning left to, to sort of have a refuge so that they can pull into that space. If you basically make a painted median type area, vehicle can stop in that area, and then you'll have free-flowing traffic in both directions, and you won't really have an issue with the potential rear end that you could have. So I, I would recommend they look at a restriping. And, and there's plenty, there's no widening of the road, no, no, no real significant work needed, it's, it's, it's all paint. So that can be done. The other comment I had was on the site plan. I looked at the, the layout, and it, you know, as was indicated, it's about a half-acre lot, and they're proposing 12 units and 24 parking spaces. But if you put the, the, the designed vehicle for a residential use like this is the SU-30, which is a single-unit truck with a 30, 30-foot wheelbase from the front to the back, which is basically your, your UPS and FedEx trucks, any, any of those standard delivery-type trucks are that size. So when you put that template on the driveway, vehicles can get in and out of the site without crossing the center line. It is a, a small width of driveway, so that the vehicle in turning takes the full width of the driveway. However, it's a very low-volume driveway, and normally, you know, there's no, there's gonna be no center line on the driveway or anything, so it's, it's considered acceptable to use the full driveway for, for the SU-30 vehicle. But the thing that I, the, the safety issue there is that because Plains Road is, is fairly heavily traveled, you do not want to have parking or backing into Plains Road. So those vehicles need to be able to come onto the site, do their deliveries, whatever they need to do, and they need to be able to turn around and exit the site without backing. And, and I just request the applicant to demonstrate how they could do that. So those are my two comments, and other than that, I think they've addressed everything.
Thank you. Attorney Nuff, do you want to comment?
Good evening again, my name is Steve Ullman. I'd like to address first the stopping site distance and the issues along Plains Road. I just received Mr. Spear's comments today, so I haven't been really able to go out and do a formal study of the stopping site distance. First of all, the analyses show that at no time will there be more than, should be no more than one car trying to turn into the site. And what Mr. Spear is alluding to is that as cars back up the queue, there may be a point where it, the first car you can see, the second car you can see, there may be a state where the third car you can't see. I went out very informally before the meeting and knelt down, and when I kneel, I'm, my eyes about 42 inches, I've been kind of measured that for years doing it, and I was looking for taillights. Granted, when you're designing a road, you design for an eye height of three and a half and an object at two feet. However, this is a little bit different, this is real world, and what you really want to make sure is that the car, if you're sitting in a car, you can see the car in front of you, which is essentially the taillights. And I was trying to make sure I saw cars, which have lower taillights than pickups or SUVs. And at about 250 feet from, what I could tell from the aerial of where there would be a single car parked, turning left, I could see their taillights. As I went back up the hill, there was a point where I could not see those taillights, they would disappear as the car drove down the hill. But that was well over 300 feet from that one car. So based on my very informal viewing, it going out there and kneeling in the dark, I believe there was sufficient stopping site distance along the road. The crash data does not show any issues with stopping site distance along there. And your own traffic, legal traffic authority and the police department haven't noted any issues out there. So, and even if we were to agree to restripe the road, which I don't believe is necessary, we need the police department to sign off on that and the public works. In terms of the SU-30 onto the site, an SU-30, which is a large delivery vehicle, that's a, a box truck, if you will, yes, it can make the turns, and if it gets on the site, it's gonna have to do a three-point turn or multi-point turn to turn around and get back out. For a development this size, I would really imagine that the normal delivery is gonna be more of the step van, the normal UPS brown truck you see. And there's more than enough room on the site for them to make a multi-point turn and get out, so. And, but we don't have anything formal to present to you on that tonight.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Nickel?
Yeah, I'd like to know how this 30-foot truck is gonna turn around in that driveway with cars parked in there.
There is no parking on the east side in front of the units. There's no parking in this area, and you have a cul-de-sac area if you have to. And if it's an SU-30, the, the only time something that size would probably be in this development is when people are moving in and moving out. And you don't really design a development for that condition. You know, we have residential areas, there's, there are existing homes on Plains Road where if there's a moving van there, they'd be parked on Plains Road, and there'd be a blockage for the few times that they might be there. What you're designing for is the, the step van type, the, the normal UPS truck, not something larger.
Excuse me, is there a dumpster site on there, and how's the dumpster truck get in there?
I'll have to let Mr. Codis Bode answer that, I'm not sure.
This is an individual pickup for the individuals that are living there.
Sorry, I didn't hear what he had said.
Tom, this is similar to the issue that came, came up recently with the Seaside Avenue project. There will be individual garbage containers and recycled containers for each unit, they'll keep them in their garage, and then there'll be a smaller truck that'll be contracted by the property management to come in and then take, take them away. So they'll be, same issues we had on that project, there'll be smaller trucks coming in to take out there.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, you know, you, you specified the size of the truck that came to the other site, and I'd like to see that incorporated into here.
Okay.
Because that was a small truck, and 30 foot's gonna have a very difficult time, and backing out into the street is unacceptable.
We certainly would be contracting a garbage removal company that would have the same type of arrangement.
There are other questions from board members. I had a quick question, just on the site possibly. I know, because I live on West Main Street there, and I've driven by that place for years, there's, seems to be, there was always equipment and different things stored. Is there any concern of environmental problems there? Because I've seen trucks out there, I've seen excavators, and I know you said there was a, a cleaning, but not dry cleaning, but is there any concern about environmental study needs to be done?
Yes, we can, we had the closing already, so Mr. Petrovich already owns the property, there was a Phase 1 that was done, and there's no environmental problem, problems. There was an oil tank that serviced the residence, and he has already contracted somebody to remove that. That was, that was actually done before we had the property closing.
All right, thank you. And just on this, on, on this study here, this, I don't see Bailey Road shown on here anywhere, is that not...
Is, is that the traffic study?
It is, yes. Is it that it just doesn't need to come into play?
Bailey Road didn't, wasn't studied, because I don't believe it'd be in play.
I mean, it's just close, you have people that can only turn right from Bailey Road, right past here, so I didn't know if that...
Right, they go past the site, but we're not generating that much traffic that would affect Bailey Road, so that was not included in the study.
Yeah, I was more concerned about the people pulling out of the development onto the street, not maybe seeing someone pulling from Bailey Road up.
Oh, no, they can see, they can see past, they can see almost all the way to Route 1 from the site driveway.
All right. Other questions? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I would ask that anyone that is for this project, come forward, state your name and address, and if you would address all your comments, please, to the board, and keep your comments to about three minutes. Again, anyone for this project. All right, seeing none, I would ask at this time, if there is anyone that is opposed to this project, again, if you would approach the podium, state your name and address, address all your comments to the board, and keep your comments to about three minutes. Anyone that is against this project.
Hello, my name is George Loizos, I live on 248 Plains Road. My, my original concerns, I guess, are, have to do with the effect on, you know, home values in the area. I just bought the house about two months ago now, and an affordable housing complex comes up. In addition to that, I guess, how it affects the, the state and local taxes and the surrounding area and that kind of thing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against this project? Right, seeing none, Attorney Lynch, you have an option to address any comments from the public?
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Solkus, any comments?
I would suggest keeping the public hearing open to receive something that gives us an indication that the neighbors are working toward or on board with the applicant to allow, you know, access to their land, whether it's for regrading or just for the construction of the, the retaining curb as presented to the board.
All right, if, I would then suggest that we do just that, that we keep the public hearing open, and we would receive this information next meeting? Would that be the, the hope?
We could ask Mr. Lynch.
Attorney Lynch, would we be able to receive whatever information is needed? I guess we're looking for something from the property owner that is the adjacent property owner.
I will endeavor to do that before the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Item H, Approval of Minutes for the October 17th meeting. Entertain a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right. Passes. Item I, Staff Report. This is in, with the lighting regulation revision.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Griffith, Director of Permitting and Land Use, wants to address the board regarding this proposed change.
All right. Good evening, Joe.
Sorry, what?
I gave a formal introduction.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Joe Griffith. I'm the Director of Permitting and Land Use. And the city attorney asked us to present this to the board tonight as opposed to going through our Subcommittee. What we're looking to do is, well, as the regulation change states, looking to enforce our light trespass regulations on the appropriate properties. But the city attorney's concern is that the way the regulation is written right now, frankly, without even getting into garage floodlights pointing on driveways and across property lines, which we don't require that kind of photometric data when we're dealing with residences, just the language itself about glare from a neighbor's property without even defining the amount of glare becomes, I think, kind of arduous in terms of trying to enforce that regulation. So the regulation tonight is specifically, as you read, excluding light emanating from one and two family residences. That's not to be confused with residential units, because obviously, as multifamily or any of hotels or what have you are constructed, they are still under the regulatory purview. And similarly, lights emanating from properties neighboring residential uses would still fall under the regulations that we have. So, I mean, I think the text change itself is pretty simple, but the intent, I just wanted to make clear that what we're looking to do is exclude your typical residential, single-family or two-family dwelling light fixture.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Solkas?
So what we're looking for is just your approval, so we can start the statutory circulation. And it will be further reviewed by the Councils of Governments and by our legal department. Then when we have all those reports back, it would come back to you for a public hearing as any regulation change would.
Thank you. Do you need a motion on this, or...
If you want to give us a formal motion, that's fine. You know, in the past, even when we've moved things up from the Subcommittee, it's been sort of a you asking and just sort of pulling the board, whatever your pleasure is.
All right. Well, we'll, I'll ask the board for motion on this then.
I would recommend that we have approval to send out for comments through the normal process.
Okay, second. Mr. Dolan, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Before we adjourn, just, I will not be here next meeting. I'm on vacation, so Mr. Quish will be in full charge here. And I would ask, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Dolan, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Chris.